Good evening and welcome to the September 9th, 2024 Tuolaton City Council Work Session. We have two items on our agenda tonight, the first being the overview and discussion of the Tuolaton Street Trees and Sidewalks Program led by Rachel?
And Ross.
Ross, come on up. You pushed them.
It's a joint presentation.
Evening.
Good evening. I will kick us off. Ross and Rachel here. No, not the characters from Friends. He's gonna try and make a joke, but we're over it, so anyways. Yeah, this is the first time you guys have heard it, I'll entertain that, but anyways, we're here to chat about a topic that affects both the parks and recreation as well as public works departments, and that is sidewalks and street trees. As you know, one of council's requested actions for 2024 is a review of the city's street tree and sidewalk street tree programs, along with some policy options for council to consider. This presentation is intended to be the first in a series of presentations and meetings to accomplish this action. So... Are we on?
Here we go.
Oh, shoot, hold on, wait, wait, before you go. It went too fast. Okay, so here's an overview of topics that we're gonna go over tonight. As you can see, we're gonna present an overview of both street trees and sidewalks. We're gonna do them separately. There's quite a bit of information to share for each, including information about the codes pertaining to each of the topics, the various programs that the city offers associated with each, challenges faced by both residents and the city in relation to these areas, and some information about current and future work plans, ideally to solve some of the challenges that we are gonna discuss tonight. Ideally, by the end, you will have an understanding of both topics, where they overlap, where they differ, and we're happy to take questions and comments at the end of the presentation. So with that, Ross, go ahead and take it away.
Well, thank you, yeah. So the two parts, but both related, so we'll talk a little bit about that as well. We'll see on the slide here, really defining what a street tree is and what it isn't. And this is actually from our city website, and has also been included in mailers and information we've sent out through email and in the past on door hangers and other informational, educational information to let folks know. And the reason why is because the street trees are the responsibility of the adjacent homeowner. And that planter strip that you see between the sidewalk and the street, and any tree that's located in that is known as a street tree. And so we have, we'll walk through a little bit of the detail about this. Essentially, street trees are put in at the time of development, but can be replaced and can be changed out by the property owner. The property owner can do that on their own, they can involve the city, and we'll talk a little bit about that process, what that looks like. On the next slide, you'll see the detail within these various codes. These are some of them. These are not all of the development code on street trees. So we'll kind of walk through just a high-level overview of this. We could spend probably a couple hours talking about just this if we wanted to. But in essence, like I said, the responsibility is the homeowner, so it's not the city's responsibility. And there are, there's a process that we have formalized in the code, the process is in the code for how to do that. And so, in terms of what specifically needs to be requested of the city and the information provided to the city is in the code. The fees are also in the code and are changed on a regular basis per the budget process and the fee, the citywide fee update. Those are the times when those fees are increased to reflect the actual cost of removal and replacement. There are details in the code about how homeowners can voluntarily plant street trees and add to the street trees that are there, as long as they're spaced out appropriately per the code. There are, there is a provision for emergency removal, so if there's a windstorm or an ice storm, the permit process can be bypassed or paused for the, for the safety of neighbors and/or folks that are traveling on the street or sidewalk. There are, there's a portion of the code that talks about maintenance responsibilities, that trimming of the trees is, is on the homeowner, and that's not the job of the, of the city. There's a section about fines. If the process is bypassed, if a tree is removed without a permit and not replaced, there is potential for provision of, of fines for that, for that lack of action. There is also a provision for city trimming within the code. So if we have situations where the trees are not maintained, the city can maintain those trees for the homeowner, for safety purposes, and for free passage of vehicles on streets, and for pedestrian safety, obviously. And I mentioned the fines, the fines for lack of maintenance is also a code item, and that's authorized by this code. There's also a section on specific species and locations and spacing that are detailed within the code. And then there's also a table of approved tree species, that's 74-1, that was adopted into the code. That list is, it's a standalone table, so that list can be updated separately from any other code revision in the, in the code. So that's a quick overview of code and responsibility, who's responsible for what.
I just had a question about with the species and look, or the table of approved trees. When was that enacted?
It was last updated, I believe it was a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, I will add on this slide as well, before we move on to the next, is that the city does do regular tree trimming and maintenance, because we have issues where trees are not maintained. And so the city will, using a contractor, typically go around the city, especially in areas where we have high traffic or issues with limbs, where vehicles are hitting those limbs, we will trim those, and they're private trees. Okay, the next slide, we'll walk into the process, the replacement process. I'll just walk you through what it looks like. If you are wanting to replace your tree and you're wanting to follow the city code and avoid, avoid any potential fines, you file a permit application online through eTrackIt. You can do this from the comfort of your couch if you'd like. The staff will review that application when we see it come in. Staff are notified via email if a new application comes in. Staff will perform a quick site visit, get a visual on that tree that they're looking to remove, and if that makes sense, if the reasons that application came in makes sense, the staff will approve that permit. There are three different options for replacements within, within the process. So the homeowner gets to select which they'd like to do. Option one is the owner can hire a contractor to remove the tree and to replace the tree. Option two is the homeowner can do the work themselves. And option three is the homeowner can pay the city to do the removal and replacement. And we see all three options utilized. Most predominantly, what we see are the city removing and replacing option. After this takes place, the city then does a quick inspection, make sure that it looks good, proper tree was replanted, it was done well, the spacing's correct, so on and so forth, and the permit's closed, and that tree has successfully gone through the proper channels for replacement. So that is, that is an overview of the process. So this process takes place, we replace about 100, a little over 100 trees a year on an annual basis, so. And that includes trees that are removed for sidewalk. And we'll talk, we can talk more about the intersection of tree, street tree replacements and sidewalk program. So the, the programs within street trees are planting, removal, trimming, and reverse frontage trees. Reverse frontage trees, of course, are, are trees that are planted on a reverse frontage. Essentially, if you have a property that has two streets on the front and backside of the property, reverse frontage is the back, that backside of the property that might have street trees. Let's talk a little bit about some challenges with, with the current code and the current program. We know there are many trees not replaced, and we know that some of these have, it's been years, in some cases, that trees have just been sitting there. There may be a stump, there may be nothing, there may be an incorrect tree per the code, improper species, spacing may be off, and that brings us to the first bullet, and that is enforcement, enforcing that, that correct, to correct that action. So that's one, one challenge. The second challenge, the code is pretty specific in this area. As I mentioned, the process down to details in the application are written into the code. Street tree trimming work, as I mentioned, the city does it, even though it's the homeowner's property, and we do it because of visibility, safety, and traffic concerns. Another challenge, ensuring that we have coordination between sidewalk replacement and, and tree replacement, and that's an important component, and we'll talk about that in a minute. And then, as I mentioned, workload, we have about 70 to 100 of these a year that go through this process, so. So that is, that is a quick overview of street trees, and we'll circle back around after we talk about sidewalks.
There we go. Okay. So we frequently receive calls in the public works department asking, "When is the city coming to fix my sidewalk?" And the answer isn't as clear as you may think, and hopefully some of the next slides will help explain why. So first and foremost, what does the code say? So the code for, for sidewalks and sidewalk maintenance is not quite as exhaustive as, as street trees, but chapter 2-02 does cover sidewalks, and most notably, there's three sections that I'd like to call out that guide us in our policymaking and things like that. So first is 2-02-020, and that's the duty to repair and clear sidewalks, which states, "It's the duty of an owner or occupant of land adjoining a street to maintain and go to repair and remove obstructions from the adjacent sidewalk in right of way." So that kind of speaks to the street tree and bushes and things like that, but it does basically require the, the homeowner to be responsible. Second is 2-02-030, which is liability for sidewalk injuries, and that states that "The owner or occupant of real property responsible for maintaining the adjacent sidewalk shall be the primary liable to any person injured because of negligence of such owner or occupant failing to maintain the sidewalk." So that means if someone trips and falls and breaks their arm or something like that, the adjacent property owner holds the liability for that. And third is 2-02-050, required sidewalk repair states, "When the operations director," that's me, "determines that a repair of a sidewalk is necessary, he or she shall issue a notice to the owner of the property adjacent to the sidewalk or street that requires the owner of the property adjacent to the street to remove the encroachment or complete the repair within 30 days." Essentially, that gives us the code enforcement right to require someone to fix the sidewalk. From what I can tell, the, the code language has been in place since 1986. There's been some tweaks over time to add some language about encroachments, notably trees. But in, in Tuolaton, it's been established since the mid-'80s that sidewalks have been the adjacent property owner's responsibility, which is not widely known. We do follow the code. Sidewalk responsibility is the adjacent property owner's responsibility, the liability rests with the adjacent property owner. As I said, if someone trips or is injured on, on the sidewalk, that liability rests with the property owner. That said, sidewalk enforcement, as with other code enforcement in Tuolaton, is complaint-driven. This means that when our code enforcement staff receive a complaint from someone that's either tripped or is unable to pass through the sidewalk, they have various reasons, we're compelled to follow up, so we send a code enforcement letter mandating the adjacent property owner to remedy the problem. We don't proactively chase sidewalk noncompliance, and we follow up only when issues are reported to code enforcement. Okay, so sidewalk replacement. So let's say a property owner wants to replace sidewalk on their own. Their first step is to apply for a permit through the city's engineering division using the eTrackIt, as Ross talked about. The cost for the permit is $173. Oftentimes, homeowners will hire a contractor who will go through the permitting process on their behalf as part of their job, and sometimes sidewalk work is paired with street tree replacement, sometimes it's not. It's also sometimes paired with a larger driveway approach project, which comes with additional permitting and additional code requirements. You may be wondering, how much does this cost? Currently, the city is paying $16.50 a square foot for concrete work to our sidewalk contractor. Most concrete panels in Tuolaton are about 25 square feet, so this equals about $413 per panel, and a private property owner will likely not get as good of a deal as the city gets through our contracts, so you can expect to pay about $500 per panel plus permitting costs. Let's say you have a project that includes replacement of three panels, removal and stump grinding of a street tree, and replanting of the tree. Let's say you want to do it with, using the city's street tree program. You're looking at around $1,700 for the concrete work, that includes permit costs, and $900 for the tree work, resulting in a grand total of $2,600 for three panels and a street tree. So, from 2020 to current day, so mid-2024, the city has only issued 21 sidewalk permits. Of course, there's likely work done without permits that the city is not aware of, that's not included in this count, but I think that's a really good number that goes to show that property owners are not frequently pursuing sidewalk replacement on their own. Okay, so sidewalk maintenance program. So back in 2001, legend has it, I say legend because it's basically through people talking, there isn't staff reports or anything I've been able to find, but a city council of days past decided to do something to help out the homeowners that were burdened by the cost of sidewalk replacement. As we know, Tuolaton built out pretty quickly in the '80s and '90s, and by 2001, sidewalks were starting to buckle and fail. In addition, the flowering plum tree that I've also heard about in these legends was frequently planted as a street tree in new developments in the '80s and '90s, and it was not the ideal tree to go in the sidewalk, the planter strips, it just, it's not right. So assistance for residential property owners and replacement of the awful flowering plum trees were the drivers for establishing the sidewalk maintenance program administered by the city. The goal of the program was and still is to eliminate tripping hazards that are oftentimes, but not always, caused by street trees. This was once known as the sidewalk street tree program. One of the changes that we've made is that we're updating it to refer to it as the sidewalk maintenance program, because there's so many different programs and terms and things that all sound kind of alike. Sidewalk maintenance program and sidewalk street tree program are essentially the same thing, but we're trying to call it that now to provide more clarity. Funding for the sidewalk, the sidewalk maintenance program is gleaned from a portion of your road utility fee revenue that's paid monthly as part of your utility bill. So currently, for an average residential property owner, your road utility fee per month is $7.15. I might be off by a few cents on that, so it's part of that fee. Budgeted funding for the program currently sits at $150,000 per year. $80,000 of that goes to sidewalk removal and replacement, $45,000 of that goes to tree removal and replacement, and $25,000 of that goes to grinding work, which is basically shave off the lip of the sidewalk to remove a smaller tripping hazard at a lower cost. So looking, looking back at the past few years, the program removes and replaces around 30 trees, removes and replaces around 325 sidewalk panels, and completes about 450 sidewalk grinds in a year with the funding allotted. So I've looked back at just the last couple of years, because costs have increased significantly for concrete, particularly since the pandemic. This work, as we've talked, is managed jointly by Bert Olheiser, our streets who are storms manager, and Tom Steiger, our parks maintenance, so they work in tandem on that program. So currently, our process with, with our sidewalk maintenance program is to move in geographic zones. You may have heard this, we move clockwise around the city. In days past, the city was split into three zones, and we moved in a three-year rotation. We are now up to 16 zones moving around the city in an eight-year rotation. The totals I shared about covered, you know, how much work we complete in a year, basically covers about work in two zones during a given year, so that's why we're on an eight-year rotation. Note that the sidewalk maintenance program only covers residential properties, commercial, industrial, and any other institutional properties are not included. They still pay street fees like the rest of us, but they don't get the benefit of the sidewalk maintenance program. So challenges and program assessments. So as I've gone through the presentation, as Ross has gone through his part of the presentation, it's probably become clear that we do face some challenges with this here in Tuolaton. As trees age and mature, sidewalks bear the brunt. I love trees, but trees and utilities and pavement and concrete don't always mix well. The sidewalks fall into disrepair, and they're falling into disrepair quicker than the city can get to fix them as part of our sidewalk maintenance program. Concrete work, like most other trades, as I mentioned, has increased significantly in price, which has exacerbated the issue and caused us to fall farther and farther behind. Even an increase in funding in 2019, this was brought as an issue, so we increased the funding from $75,000 to $150,000 a year. It didn't really yield much catch-up because of cost increases and because the sidewalks continue to age and the trees get larger. The geographic approach that I mentioned moving around in the zones is one way to approach and organize work. It's fair, it establishes an easy-to-manage order for how the city does the work, but does it result in the worst sidewalks, sidewalk hazards getting fixed first? No. Does it result in areas with more pedestrian traffic getting addressed sooner? No. Does it leave some areas that are frontages that are probably relatively large, that are frequented by people walking either for leisure or to get somewhere? No. So it does have its, its drawbacks. There's downsides and challenges, and it has an impact on overall the sidewalk network. Sidewalks are expensive to fix, as I stated, we don't do proactive code enforcement. This paired with the fact that the city has a program to help people out likely disincentivizes people to complete the work on their own, and that statement might be a generalization, but I think it's safe to say that most folks would rather assume the liability for a couple of years and wait their turn in line for the city to come do the work, even if they must wait several years. That said, we still encounter a lot of unhappy residents. They want their sidewalk repaired. Most don't know that sidewalk maintenance is technically the responsibility of the property owner until they call and we say, "No, sorry, wait your turn." Excuse me. I have congestion that I'm getting over, I apologize. The mixed messaging is, it's a challenge for staff, so myself, Bert, Tom, people that answer the phones, I'm looking back at Lindsay. It's tough to say to people, "We won't fix your sidewalk, it's your responsibility," while also saying, "If you want to wait a few years, the city will come do the work for you, we have a program for that." And it's even more challenging when a code enforcement complaint comes in, and we don't get tons, but we do get some. So when a code enforcement complaint comes in and we have to go to this homeowner out right here and essentially single them out, say, "Fix your sidewalk now," while we are telling people potentially down the street, "Wait your turn and we'll come do it," the inconsistencies just are a challenge for us, and there's not necessarily like a one best solution, so what are we doing about it? So currently, we're in the doing our homework phase of an alternatives analysis. Our end goal is to bring some policy decisions and alternative approaches for the program back to council for guidance. It's been around for a while, I'm not sure when the last time it went to council for guidance was, so it'd be good to get some direction kind of on, how do we want to take this and what do we want to do? We are in the midst of a citywide sidewalk assessment, we say, "We're behind," but how behind are we? How big is the backlog of work? Where do the largest issues exist? Where's the most clusters of sidewalk deficiencies in Tuolaton? Are there certain neighborhoods that are worse than others? So we've brought in a sidewalk assessment walker to come in and catalog and document all the sidewalk defects on every street in Tuolaton, and it should be completed in the next couple of weeks. She's close. She's like 90% done, so that'll give us some really good baseline information. We're also looking at what other cities do for sidewalk programs, because we are not the only city that's in this business, and looking to our neighbors is a great way to get ideas on alternative approaches. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, hopefully. And once our homework phase is complete, we'll develop a list of alternative approaches that we can take when it comes to administering a sidewalk program. We'll lay out the pros and cons of each, because there will be pros and cons with each, and we will make a return to council with these alternative programmatic approaches, probably this winter, hopefully, you know, maybe November, December, I don't know, December gets a little clunky with the holidays, but that said, any thoughts, opinions, guidance you want to share tonight are helpful as we kind of endeavor into this next phase, so anything, opinions you'd like to share can be helpful to guide our, our next stages of work with the sidewalk maintenance program, so. Sorry, I talked longer than you, Ross.
You're good. This is great.
Oh, I already talked about that.
So that's the sidewalk work to come, and so here's kind of next steps for street trees. Similar fashion, get an assessment, understanding of where we have street tree issues, where we have missing street trees, where we have street tree problems. Develop an updated list of our street tree approved species, which is this list. Take a good look at that list and understand what, what would be appropriate moving forward and what would not. Develop some alternative approaches, figure out some, do some, some case studies of other cities and other communities and how they're managing this, and then to develop some recommendations and, and bring those recommendations back to you. That is the, that is the next steps and plan for us. Would love to hear any comments, thoughts, questions.
Council Brooks.
Thank you so much for bringing this up, and I think we, as city councils, also feel the rub, so I appreciate exactly what you're talking about. I had a couple questions and ideas. So one question I had was, how does our street tree program interface with our tree city? And I think clarifying that for people, I just had a constituent ask me why somebody could cut down a big tree here in their yard, I know this isn't a street tree, without a permit, where some other cities have to do that, and especially with climate change, and there was, this person was saying there was nothing, I don't know all the things, obviously, but this person was saying there was, you know, when they asked the neighbor, they said it was messy, and so it was like, anyway, so that was one thing that I had a question about. My other question was, we had our sidewalks done recently, and right before the ice storm, I think, and somebody has just come across and done the, the white on it, and the new ones that they put in cracked like right away, and the other ones are really, really old. Then there was some patching that was done, and that's all gone away. So I don't know if the materials are different and they don't mesh with the old stuff, I don't know why that is, but it seemed really kind of strange to me, so. And then I always want to look at climate, like we don't want to not have street trees, is there room for permeable sidewalks, concrete? And then, when the mayor and I were talking one time too, we had talked about, in the past, they had put boxes around the roots of trees, and don't do that anymore, and then the trees are looking for the sprinkler systems, et cetera, so those kinds of, the roots, so that is a question as well. And then finally, I like the idea of doing a needs assessment versus, you know, traipsing around the things in order. Not that I want anyone to be left out, but I think a needs assessment's good, and one of the things that would be nice about a needs assessment, if we have clusters of worn sidewalks because of aging, where it's all aging around the same time, and especially if it's near a school or paths to safety, there's those opportunities for community development block grants, which are a lot more reasonable, or a lot more easy to get now that it's a little bit less competitive with the number of cities competing. And then finally, is there an approach where someone wants to get their sidewalk replaced and there's a shared cost? Like could we figure out a way to split the cost with the city so that we could have the amount of work done at that rate, and then the community member would be able to contribute part of it, so it would offset, I wouldn't want to do that for somebody that was really high-needs community, and I think the grants and some thinking around that would be really good. Um, and I think the grants and some thinking around that would be really good. Um, and then finally, I know of a, a person who has a nursery, and she gets referrals from um, other cities where they give um, the list and a coupon from the city to the nursery, and then the nursery replaces the street tree. Like, the person can pick them out themselves at the nursery and can ask those questions. They still use their list, but it's a way of um, doing that same thing with mass, with buying more and getting a deal. I think Portland does it. I think Lake Oswego does it, um, and some other cities do it, if that makes sense. Yeah. I think that's all that I've got. I, oh, how much does, is the um, fine?
So.
Yeah, for trees.
So it's uh, there, there are several different, thank you. There are several different uh, levels of fines. There's, there's a hundred dollar fine indicated within the code, but there's also the ability for higher fines of up to a thousand dollars and a thousand dollars, up to a thousand dollars per day, depending on the issue. So um, we currently are not fining uh, folks for the, for the tree issue, and that's one of the enforcement questions. Uh, we'll, we'll come back to you with.
Because I know people that walk often, and they are really unhappy when people take out their street trees and don't replace them. And they want to call, but they don't want people to be upset with them because they get fined. But the interest is out there and it's very frustrating to them, and they're also concerned about trip hazards, not just with the uneven sidewalks, but also with any kind of debris and stuff falling from the trees. So those things I think are really important to think about as we're kind of moving through the conversation. Um, because, you know, ever, all different ages and abilities are using these. And I want to ask one off-topic question too. I'm sorry to keep going, but I had me, approached me this weekend actually about shared use paths in the Commons area, and somebody whiz by them, very close where they could feel the breeze on a electric bicycle. So I'm just curious about posting those kinds of things and safety around that as well, and learning more about how we're managing all these cross-uses. I know that's a conversation maybe for another day, but I would like that.
Great, great question. Certainly, yes. Is, is a challenge and some work is being done at the state level to address that.
Thank you.
Other question. Councilor Gonzalez.
So thank you very much for this update. I have been longing for this information for some time. I would like to say that um, we to all should be outside, we should be out of the tree and sidewalk replacement business only as a must-do situation, or maybe we develop an affordable low-income program, and that's it. I work with all different cities, and it's pretty clear. Homeowner associations don't have this privilege of having cities come in there. They all take care on their own, while they're still paying the utility fees to cover the trees, you know, that they don't get to benefit from. So we should not do it. We should code enforce diligently so that we can hold ours own self as a city accountable. But we need to be clear. Let's get out of that business and do refer people and do have it as a small fund, but not promote it, because we do have to have money for emergencies and other things. But we shouldn't reinvent the wheel. This is pretty cut and dry, and homeowners are responsible in, in HOA and in other cities for the sidewalk. Sure, they will decry that this tree can't be cut down, it's the wrong variety, so you should city take care of the sidewalk, because you are the one permitting on the trees. It doesn't work that way. You know, it's, we have to have tree permitting to protect our significant canopies. Uh, homeowners will thrash on trees. They'll plant the wrong ones. They'll do whatever they want without some guidance. But we have to code enforce, unfortunately. I know in my neighborhood, missing trees all throughout. When we talk about climate action plan and the low-hanging fruit and the effects that one acre of tree lots, tree, tree acres does to the absorbent of carbon, all of the various benefits, we have enough acreage in our Tualatin city to take care of our own population when it comes to the climate action plan. So let's get our trees, um, the, so again, other trees are doing it already. We don't have to reinvent it. Lake Oswego, for example, if we plant trees, or a lot of trees were planted at one time, and if I grow on the location, you have to begin to thin out. Take one, take two. You can't always replant back, so we have to be mindful of that. Lake Oswego charges a fee to, to not plant back. So there's, you take out four trees, you can only put two back. You're paying two hundred and seventy-five dollars to not plant back. So that's five hundred dollars that goes to the Parks Department for their arts and all those things that they do out there. I mean, Lake Oswego is very challenging for trees, but they've become very um, aware that they have to make changes. Um, they used to be like, "No, tree cannot be coming down no matter what." Now, as long as you're replacing something with our new revised variety, you can do it. Replace this sidewalk while you're there. That's very simple. Trees and sidewalks should be maintained separate, though trees affect sidewalk and vice versa. But in areas where there's no, no trees, and you have sidewalk and it snows, and you do granular ice melt, it'll mess up the sidewalk. So it's very important to have those separated out, to have that budgeted out, but it's still the homeowner's responsibility regardless. It, it is what it is. So we need to get out of it and make it clear and still have a program, but not say it's a Tualatin tree program, just we'll do it because we have to, emergency, maybe affordable housing or whatever. I mean, there's a lot of other wonderful partnerships that we can develop with nurseries um, to get discounted trees and so on and so forth. So that's, I'll close with that.
Can I add a comment really quick? I, I didn't mention this in the presentation, but code enforcement for sidewalk non-compliance, uh, we are not able by our code to levy a fine. Instead, we can put a lien on the property. The city pays to do the work, and then we place a lien on the property, which, I mean administratively, uh, according to Dawn, is not super hard to do. We've not done it in my time here. Um, thankfully, people have been pretty responsive when we send them a code enforcement letters. Um, but we don't have the option to find, and then when you lien a property, the city pays to do the work, and then what if the person lives there for like fifteen more years? I, I, so it's a little antiquated, in my opinion, but that's, that's the option that we have for sidewalk code enforcement.
Council Ray.
Thank you for the presentation and education um, for myself as well. Um, I'm, I'm thinking of places that are, or areas that are rented versus um, owned by owner. Like, it's a lot easier to, um, I guess not easier, but do, deal with the homeowner personally versus a renter. And so I think that's where um, it's hard to kind of, I, I, I wouldn't be in your situation to decide whether this sidewalk needs to be fixed and who's going to fix this or repair this, when it's a renter that's been living there ten, fifteen years, twenty years, even more. Um, and then you've, you know, you can't find the, the renter, and um, they're suffering, they're hearing from you all the time. So I feel like I, we, we sometimes, we think of ourselves because we own property, but it's those, I feel like there's a lot of that going on. Um, I have been in the, I've seen, and I have in the Alaska City this area where most of those properties are properly rented and their sidewalks need repair, and so I can see that being a hard thing to enforce. And um, I, go ahead and comment, and then we'll have another.
Yeah, I was going to say, so our sidewalk maintenance program, we, we go out and we'll door hang people and say, "Hey, we've noticed this issue with your sidewalk." We will only fix sidewalk issues that are caused by street trees. We will not cause side, fix sidewalks that are caused by private trees in the yard that are causing the sidewalk defect. That policy decision was made, I think, a long time ago, so that's how we've always done it, quote unquote. Um, but if we door hang somebody on this house, it's kind of up to them. They have to get the door hanger. They have to respond and say, "Yes, please do the work." "Yes, here's the tree I want." We don't get responses from renters, I think, because, "I don't own this property. I can't make this decision." And if they don't respond, we move on. We don't do the work. So I think it's, I think it's a good point that you make, Councilor Reyes, of, of how does this get to rental properties and, and things like that, because they're not owner occupied, so. Um, and then later on, when it becomes an issue, maybe someone's tripped or whatever, or the, the renter realizes that there's an issue, well, it's too late and we're not in your zone, so. Definitely an issue worth, worth mentioning. Thanks.
So that can be, I can see that being a, a situation, especially in the areas that are a little bit more neglected. Some, some people tend to take care of their own things when they see something like that. Um, I'm curious to learn, um, are you getting more complaints on sidewalks versus trees mostly? Or is it, does it, when you get complaints, are they mostly sidewalks or are they mostly trees? So where is the highest?
Both.
Both?
Yeah.
I do, I, I think in public works, we receive complaints about, "The city's not got to my property fast enough. When are you going to come fix this? This shouldn't be my responsibility. You made me plant this tree. This tree has now affected the sidewalk. Why am I on the hook for the cost?" Um, "I don't want to plant back the tree."
Just had a, just had a conversation with a resident last, last week. Uh, the neighbor across the street had their sidewalk replaced and all their street trees replaced by the city. And on their property, that wasn't the case, and they wanted the city to help with their, with their challenges, different challenges, but, but street tree challenges. So yes, we hear, we hear those complaints.
So just to be, and to understand, the trees cause the sidewalk problem, so it's not just.
Correct.
Pretty often, yeah. I mean, not always, but pretty often the street trees are what cause the uneven sidewalks and the breakage and things like that. Yeah.
Okay, um, and, and you're asking us to sort of think about what we can do and ask um, to make it may, because I, I've been thinking like, maybe do create a process where we can um, consider areas that are, I, I just would hate to have you continue doing the same thing and not enforce, because I think enforcement is important as well. But then if it's a renter, I mean, and it's the area that mostly needs it, needs it, then how do we enforce that? So I'm just gonna, um, because I was thinking of process of priority, prioritizing areas, or maybe a homeowner can apply for a grant or a grant from the utility, road utility um, fund. And so I mean, just, and then kind of, that way it makes it like, okay, I can apply for it. I can, it'd be, you can monitor, or you can fix it yourself, and you can, but you can apply for this and, and then go based on that. But then it's the, I'm, I'm just thinking of the people that are not going to do it, which is the, sometimes where you need it the most. Just tough situation, but thank you for the education.
I mean, I don't, I don't, if you have thoughts, opinions, feelings, I mean, I'm happy to take them. It will guide kind of how we look at this. There's a bunch of different ways to skin this cat. Sorry. I know, I don't like that term. A bunch of different ways we could uh, uh, crumble this cookie, I guess. Um, that's better. So, I mean, there's, there's going to be challenges no matter what we do. If we do more code enforcement, people are going to be unhappy that now, now the cost is on them. Um, if we are a free-for-all and we fix everybody's sidewalks, well, that's going to cost more money for the city. Where does it come from? Do we increase our fees? Do we take from other programs? Um, so I think, I guess my request for, for you all is to think about this over the next, you know, couple of months, as we go around and look and see what other alternatives are out there. I like the idea of a grant program, the cost sharing. Those are all great ideas, and I know that they've worked in other cities as well. So I think what we'll come back with is some ideas that are kind of across the spectrum of, are we all the way over, you know, we do it all? Are we all the way over on, we don't do any? Are we somewhere in the middle and kind of highlighting the pros and cons of, of all of those things? So, I mean, not to bring up the staff capacity issue, but with this, kind of how we do it right now. We've got the staff capacity. We manage it as best we can. If we do more code enforcement, that's probably more code enforcement capacity that we'll need to take on. If we do all the work ourselves, that's more project management that we'll need to take on to manage contractors or things like that. So some of the ramifications from that are, are also, I think, what we'd present with all the different alternatives. So.
I think that if someone is an owner and is renting out their property, they should make sure that their property has, is safe for not just the renter, but also the sidewalks or the area that they're responsible for. And um, so I, I would be a little harder on the owner that is not taking, that has, has a renter there, but it's not taking care of that, even just the renter, because the renter might want to, but the, the fact that they're not even, they might not even live here in Tualatin. They live in California or somewhere else. And so I think that that's a little bit of a, I mean, I, I, that's where I, I will see priorities versus someone who lives here. It's an owner that doesn't have the funds to pay for that. That's a different, different situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Hillier.
Thank you very much. I loved this conversation. So first off, I'm sure, obviously, you know, as Councilor Brooks indicated, this is something we hear every time we're in public and even have thoughts ourselves. Similar to what our constituents have to say. But what I would just add to the conversation is, and yes, I am one of them.
She wants her sidewalk fixed.
I, yeah, my neighbors want it. Anyway, yes. And anyway, I look forward to seeing the data, and I um, I'm really glad that you're collecting it. One thing I wonder if you can, if there's a way to add in there is like, in a way, the calls for service, if you will. You've mentioned like some of the reasons people have called in and are upset. So I think part of what, from my perspective, to find the right creative solution that, that we'll have to come up with is, you know, we, we are a community that all needs to come together and work together, and if we're, you know, infuriating our community, that isn't good. Being fiscally irresponsible isn't good either, but so we need to be able to hear and understand exactly. Maybe, maybe there are things happening in different parts of the community that I don't see and hear and equal to, to each of us. So I look forward to that. And I also wonder, like in the parks, um, when we were getting ready for the Parks Bond, it felt like there was some really good data research or, or um, information provided, like, so that we could have a really um, succinct definition of, this is a level one issue, this is a level two, this is a level three, like, so that, that, and, and you kind of defined it so that we had a really clear picture of what that would look like and mean. So I, I would, I don't know, if you're ninety percent done and that isn't already happening, I'm not asking to go backwards.
Yep.
I just wonder.
Yep, she's measuring all of the, all of the offsets and, because, you know, if it's an offset that's less than an inch, like a little tripping hazard, you can grind that, and that'll do. I mean, it's probably going to eventually pop back up, but that'll get you by for five years, maybe. Fifty bucks. So. Seventy-five bucks for a homeowner. So there's, there's certainly levels of severity when it comes to this. And like, one of the things that we think about is, what about somebody that lives on a big corner lot? They've got eight street trees.
It's on my list. Yeah.
And twenty-five panels. Like, am I going to code enforce someone to take out a second mortgage to do thirty-five thousand dollars worth of street tree and sidewalk work? I don't, I don't know.
Great question. Yes.
Yeah, because there's definitely differing levels.
With six, and so I'm even thinking, you know, the sidewalk level, I mean, some places, the tree roots are just, you know, up over like the inches. Like, I'm just curious how you're measuring it, so that when we're having a discussion, we really just are really truly looking at the, the same exact thing. And um, so I'll also, I'm interested to um, see that information and what best practices are in other communities, because I know these, these things happen in, just in partnership beautifully with communities all across our nation, and especially with wanting to keep and increase the tree canopy for all, all the right reasons. But this is a partnership with the community, and um, I, I love the ideas of grants and different things. So I, I look forward to hearing, hearing from that and for us to be able to engage. So thank you.
Oh, I have a bunch of them. Well, okay, on the rental properties, I'm not getting, it's really easy to look up who owns a property, so why wouldn't you be contacting the owners?
So when we do our sidewalk, street tree program, we do not send people things in the mail.
Okay.
We go to their house and we fill out a door hanger, and we will hang it on their door that says, "Hey, you've got a street tree issue. Here's what it is. You need to tell us that we can do the work." We have legally, as per city attorney, Chad before Kevin said, "You can't just do the work. You have to get the property owner's permission."
I know, but you're not.
But we don't know if the person that lives in the house is a renter, and even just looking it up on like GIS, we can see the owner's name, but we don't know if that's the person that lives in the house or not. So we door hang them. If they don't respond, we may door hang them one more time. We've had some internal conversations about how much do we chase people to do their work for them. Um, but if it's a renter, if we wanted to change our approach and do a mailer instead, that would add mailing costs and that would add some turnaround time, but um, we haven't done a mailer. So we could mail something to the property owner to try to get around that, but.
Okay. So to me, it's like, I like more of the carrot than the stick. So like, I would like it to be, I, it looks to me like you have a couple of options. One is, we just increase that fee, so we cover. I mean, that's one. I don't know what that cost would be. And the other, to me, is like, um, And the other, to me is like, um, maybe like a solution where you contact people. I mean, you're right. It can be costly and maybe someone, even if it's two panels, maybe somebody doesn't have a thousand dollars sitting around to pay for the sidewalks. I would guess that's often the case. So it'd be nice if there was some way we could, um, like contact the person, say, the city can help you, like maybe you're, like you were saying, maybe the city's cost is less, so you say you have this option. And then have some kind of, you know, and that's administration too, but some kind of program where they could pay it back, like a low interest or no interest loan.
Something like that, or we thought about maybe an application process. You come to us if you need your sidewalk fixed or you need help. Or there's, instead of the city going to, to the person, 'cause right now we go to the zone and we walk the zone and we identify the issue and we door hang the person and we wait for them to respond and then we capture their response and then we.
Yeah.
It's, there's definitely a pretty big administrative process that goes with it.
Yeah, and what bothers me more about what you've saying is there's all these different things going on. We have, we need one thing, you know? Not, oh, play this game of waiting and, you know, or not. If your neighbor doesn't like you and complains and you're in trouble, that's, that's just odd. And it needs to be a little more consistent on that. The other thing, I guess, is that I would like, as you're looking at this, to consider the housing that's gonna be added. We know that's gonna be added in the next five to ten years, 'cause that's, you know, if you, you decide, okay, we can do maintenance for, let's say, ten dollars a month. Uh, well, we're gonna have more houses. And is that gonna add to the cost? And then the last thing is, like, as you're looking at this, like, um, I think Councilor Brooks alluded to it, like, looking at, um, if there are things you can do that are more, um, what we found out from our climate action plan, like, we know the, the trees, like, are there tree? I know Councilor Gonzalez has mentioned this, like, there are trees that take less water, that might not grow as big and uproot the sidewalks as quickly. So looking at that, looking at like things like, um, different sidewalk types, like impervious or, I don't know if that works or not, but at least exploring it.
Impervious sidewalk, I think, is good, but all around the city would be at maintenance intensive because you have to clean. You have to have a small sweeper to s- essentially sweep it out so it can do its job. So that would be a maintenance consideration, I think, that we'd have to think about, but I mean, to look into. We've got the one example over off ninety-nine.
I'm done.
She wants to accept, I just said no to her. Go ahead. Keep it short. We're running out of time.
My thing was, um, do we measure the, because some of the, some of the neighborhoods have different size curb too. And so I think tailoring that conversation is really important, looking at age and then remembering the difference. HOAs pay fees, so some of those new neighborhoods are HOAs, so I guess we're not doing it there, or we need some things about that. And then I'm with Valerie, like, uh, Council President Pratt, why don't we, um, reach out to, there is a way to find out if it's a rental property. There's ways of knowing that. And then, um, even just calling them, just to say, like, there's some, you know, we don't wanna have neglect here, kinda thing.
Thank goodness it's about the renter information. So I think that.
Oh, and then home. Do home grants cover the, the building up, like when they replace stuff inside the house? Remember when they're building to help people that are struggling maintaining the homes? Okay. That's a community development. Okay.
Anyway, I think there's some other stuff through the county.
I would suggest that when you do the hangers, um, maybe have, post a question there is, are you a renter? Are you an owner? If you're an owner, uh, if you're a renter, please have your contact person us here, because I think maybe they're not sure what to do with that. I wouldn't, I'm, I think if you don't ask me, then I wouldn't know what to tell you if I'm a renter or an owner. So I thi- I would suggest that information there.
No, just, 'cause we're running, I had a feeling it was gonna run long. Um, a few things I have. When you meant residential, commercial, industrial, on apartment complexes that have sidewalks, are they paying the fee? Okay. Going to Councilor Gonzalez's question, uh, whether, whether or not we should be in this business or not. You know, I was at the Aging Task Force meeting today, and this was on their list. They wanna talk, 'cause mobility is one of their things for next year. And most people assume the city's responsible for the trees and the sidewalks. And don't wanna hear that they have to pay for it. As someone mentioned, I didn't plant that tree. I didn't want that tree, but you made me put that tree in. And now you got my sidewalks buckling and you want me to pay for it. So one of the things I'm looking forward to is when you do your analysis, is making that decision if we should be in this or not. Because you look at other cities, I've got friends who live in the city of Portland, it's very clear who's responsible in Portland. You are. And it's very expensive in the city of Portland to replace your sidewalk and trees. And there's no ifs and and buts. The city is not going to do it, and they will fine you every day in the city of Portland for not doing it. So that's something I'd like to see as a result of your analysis. I know one of the challenges, uh, I've talked to Rachel before, is as you've mentioned, the growth here in town over the years. One of the challenges we might have is, I'll pick on Pony Ridge. Pony Ridge has a terrible problem right now with the buckling of sidewalks, because it was all built at one time. All these trees are popping at the same time. So you've got a whole neighborhood that there's no way we could ever cover that whole neighborhood in probably one cycle. So you could get into predicaments where, why did they get it and I didn't? So this is something I'm very much looking forward to, 'cause again, as other councils were saying, this, you know, these is, one of the most common things we'll hear about other than development is street trees and sidewalks.
It's the most angry phone calls.
Yeah, and the angry phone calls and emails, and then you and I are talking and what can we figure out? So, uh, everything, everybody's input was terrific, different ideas on, do we get out of it or do we stay partially into it for grants? 'Cause we know some folks won't be able to afford it. Um, so I'm looking forward to your studies and look what the city does. I was told at one time the city required, when that tree went in, a she, uh, a plate of steel was supposed to go between the sti- the tree and the sidewalk in Tuolatin, but builders started disregarding it and not putting the, the plate of steel in there anymore. So there's all kinds of things over the history at times, if you've been, stories you get. And this has been one that's been a pain to a lot of city councils before us. And hopefully we can, we can solve this for future city councils. All right?
Woo!
Thank you very much.
Go team. All right.
Thank you guys.
All right. So our next item on the agenda is the allocation of funds to outside agencies. Um, do we have the ever-famous Excel file? There it is. So I'm gonna do our usual tradition of, uh, can you make that bigger?
It's as big as last time. You just can't see it.
Yeah, I don't think so.
We can turn off the, the way it's viewing.
'Cause what, the way we usually start this, uh, as I recall, is the folks from last year who received money, we usually start that point and plug in the amount they got last year. Uh, then we go from there. As long as they're still.
There.
There, as long as they're still there and as long as they met the requirements for last year, 'cause there was one agency that, um, one of the requirements is that they were supposed to come and give a presentation. And there's one I noticed that did not do it. The School Foundation.
It's not a requirement of the program to make the presentation. It was just a simple.
Okay.
Ask if they wanted to.
All right. But just keep in mind.
I think so. Thank you.
That might be too big. Can you get rid of the header?
Yeah.
Squish the header on the Excel. I got it. I already got my Excel file done. Okay.
All right. So the direction was to input previous year's amounts into.
Yeah, that's how we usually start.
We're the ones that are asking.
Oh, with the previous year's amount.
Right.
All right. I'm with you now.
Nope, they're not in the list this year.
Guess I'm not with you.
You do this every year, Megan. You should be a pro at this.
I know. Suppose we should cue the elevator music.
Or Jeopardy music.
Yes. That have not resubmitted?
Yes.
Oh, goodness. Never borrow somebody else's computer.
Keepers, that right. She can, she can collapse the header, but.
Okay.
There we go.
All right.
All right. So can you scroll to the bottom and see what the total is? 'Cause we have fifty thousand available to allocate and this.
It should be forty. Oh, no, it'll be less. Did the grant go increased by ten thousand dollars in this year's budget by?
Yeah.
There's a couple that didn't apply.
It's fifty thousand, yeah.
Yeah. The total's at the top. Oh, okay. So is it at fifty right?
No. You gotta do a sum at the bottom. We're gonna test Megan's Excel skills right now.
Oh, wrong way.
It's 'cause we're all staring at her.
I know.
You can do the gray one in, in Roro forty-eight. Just put it in there. You got it? Can you go? People, the people use Excel.
All right.
All right. So we're at thirty-three, five. Let the free-for-all begin. All right. So let's go ahead and let's start at the top, if you will. All right. So we can, just so you can see the agencies, if you don't have it in front of you. All right. So let's, let's go that nice suggestion. Let's do the new folks. Uh, and we'll, can, we can fill those in. So Sipa's looking for two thousand dollars for Plant Back Gardens.
I'm all about it, 'cause it was to give people, um, oh, sorry.
Sipa was asking for the people that move into Plant Back Gardens. They wanna give them welcome baskets with like cleaning supplies and basic essentials. And I mean, I haven't moved in a long time, but that stuff costs a lot when you're moving in. So I'm all for the two thousand.
I'm fine with the two thousand. Bridget.
I'm fine with the two thousand. I would, before we, as we're going down this, I'm just wondering if, um, our city manager would just talk a little bit about the Columbia Land Trust at a certain point, because I don't think, I think it went really, we went quickly through it during budget season. And I think it would be good, at least for me, to feel educated on that, um, now that we won't be funding them through this anymore, so that we know, so that people know why we're not doing it. And also so that we know what we're getting as a city. I mean, it could be at the end or whatever, but whatever, whatever you guys want.
That is the Backyard Habitat Program that, um, as a part of this year's budget process, we proposed entering into a partnership, and I think it's, uh, fourteen thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars, somewhere in that range, that we entered into a contract with them to, uh, provide services to our community. So they are no longer, uh, applying through this program.
I just wanna say too, that neighboring cities have been doing this as well. So we're just, we're not standing alone in this.
Okay. No, we're doing the new ones. So Mitch is the next new one? Yeah, they, they're looking for money for a school lunch program, uh, for microwaves and stuff like that, 'cause they really don't have anything aside of Mitch. Refrigerators, you know, basics for, and on my list, I, I had the three thousand form. Others?
I'm okay with Mitch and I can, I'm happy to start with three thousand, but I'm willing to take a look at it as we go through.
Yeah, just put the three from there.
Uh, next one is the Pili Group is new.
Yes.
I noticed just as a point of order to, their nonprofit information does not match the name that they have on here. And so it, yeah, so that seems like a, an issue on their IRS filing.
Correct. So their, all the, um, their information was checked against the database. They had some errors in their filing and they're working to get the naming, um, correct, but they are in active, in current five oh one three C status.
So other than their paperwork, how do people feel about them? Uh, why was, it's, uh, I don't know if you wanna speak to it. What I, the way I read about it was it's outreach to Hispanic women and empowerment and assisting them.
Yeah, I've attended their meetings. Um, I would say that they do have a really good program. I'm not su- I think they, they're doing it, we need a poll now, but I don't know if everyone there is from Tuolatin. I think they use the facility of Tuolatin. They use our city. But I don't know if they're from, how much their outreach is for Tuolatin. I, I haven't really gone that far, but a lot of them come from like different parts of the, uh, state, like nearby cities. So it's, it's totally up to you. I, I, yeah, I don't know. I don't know how much is really. Yeah, me too. I don't know if seven thousand dollars is.
No, just, just leave your mics on, 'cause I'm not gonna have a.
Well, okay. So for me, um, I, I am all about serving people who live, work, and play here. So I think that when people come here and they identify us as a good neighborhood to want to, uh, build community and you utilize our city services and things like that, I, I like that. And I've seen them at our, uh, at, um, the twelve, the festival, Viva and other things like that. So I'm about supporting them. I don't need to support them. But I think as a new organization, like a thousand or two would be fine with me too.
You're not in your head. Okay. Let's go down to the next one. Uh, smart reading.
Okay. I love this one.
I like that, was 'cause it's books.
It's books to young kids and it makes, it can make a life difference if they learn to read young.
You wanna do the full five thousand?
I'm all about it. We can negotiate later.
Seventy K. Yeah, it's, it's a great program.
Put five thousand here for now, okay, always. Okay.
Are they operating out of, um, here? Tuolatin Elementary.
Tuolatin Elementary School.
A Tuolatin Elementary? Oh, yeah.
Uh, the Booster Club.
For signage?
I'll be the, I'll be the bad guy here. I was like, no.
The other things are so much more important.
Yeah, I was like, no, sorry.
Anybody else?
I like the idea that they're trying to partner with the city. Um, and there was, as you remember, even, it had nothing to do with the Pack Backers, but the sign that's out in the front was a big drama. And, um, I think they're just trying to help traffic flow, right? That it actually is beneficial to especially people who live over near there.
Others on that one? We'll circle back.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I'd like to see something, but I'm.
Tuolatin River Keepers. Tuolatin River Keepers.
It wasn't clear about their request.
I, I, um, I like that they partner, that they help our Tuol- our river.
Did you see what they're doing? What they wanna do with the money?
What do they wanna do?
It wasn't clear.
Pull out invasive species. It's, I mean, that's, it's my opinion. They, they wanna pull invasive species. It has nothing to do with serving the people in the community.
I just, I disagree, because the problem with the river is that it's too hot, and the reason that it's too hot is erosion. And so when you have all these invasive species, they need to restore, um, the riparian, that's what we do with Friends of Trees as well. So to me, it serves. So to me, it serves, I mean, we're going to be highlighting a river, we're bringing it to the front yard with the new riverfront park. And they don't just do that, they do tours for like seniors in our community and help people
That's not what this money is for. That's not what they're gonna use the money for.
I under, I understand pulling invasive species in my mind helps the whole ecosystem of the river, which benefits the community for not only tourism. You see how many people go on the river and utilize it. And they won't do that on a healthy river.
I'm like 2,000?
Put a place hold, go ahead.
So did you say this is for removing invasive species?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I would be 100% for, for this, simply because invasive species will encroach on our native species, which are so more valuable on beneficial for the environment and our insects, our local native that feed on all those kind of things. The, the blackberries, the poison oak, poison ivy, the canary grass, all this specific stuff, it just dominates and takes over. It almost will, we will have to do mitigation, that's how much the non-invasives take over and will encroach to ours. Because I would, I would do a huge pitch for all of it.
It also sounded like they were making these events, so they're doing educational work.
Yeah, can I, can I also add to that too? We, with our Parks Department, we're removing invasives all the time and we have volunteers doing that. So if you let the invasives be right on the river, all those seeds and everything go right down the river and they keep spreading around and it makes it very difficult. So I know when I was looking at, even just with our own parks lands, we want support with invasive species. So for me, I would want to bump it up, to be honest.
So put the, if you put 3,500, I think we're really close to our 50,000. There you go.
And I'd like to support that too because in our, in our organization, one of the things that we're trying to do is make sure that we don't have a lot of invasive species and recover, a lot of animals in our ecosystem have gone extinct because these invasive species have completely destroyed our natural native plants and animals within the rivers and ponds and things like that.
I was gonna say, my one ask would be scrolling to the top. The Borland Free Clinic, I would like to see get 4,000 with the new facility. They're serving a lot more folks.
Yeah.
And that would get us right to the 50,000.
But there's, Megan, can you scroll down to the middle? There's one that hadn't asked that we didn't address yet, Family Promise. Oh. Or Good Neighbor Center. Good Neighbor Center we haven't addressed, they've asked, we didn't give them anything last year.
We leave Community Warehouse the same, yeah.
And Community Warehouse might be the other one.
Oh, they moved.
Yeah, oh, we did give them, we have 3,500.
For operations too, so it's not like a specific, I like to kind of support specific programs. Because operations
So are we okay with zero on that one?
I'm sorry?
On what?
On the Good Neighbor Center?
No, no.
Oh, Community Warehouse.
Yeah, I think that sometimes I would rather have a
Move that somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah, move it somewhere else, in my opinion, I, I really want
I agree, and I don't know that it's, now that they've moved, I'm sure they're helping us, but not as much as other organizations are directly helping us.
Yeah, right.
Move it down to 2,000 or something? Move 1,500 somewhere else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Start there. And so what
I'm okay with moving Community Warehouse down to like 1,000.
Yeah.
I'd propose, I'd propose bumping that up, the food pantry. Because the number of people they serve in our community is exponential.
I like that.
I have, um, where's the food pantry in the
So what's the food pantry gonna go to?
Well, I'd, I'd propose their full amount request.
Where's the food pantry?
On the bo, almost the bottom four.
So I wrote down the numbers of how many people they serve.
The other, the next biggest one's like a couple hundred. They serve over 21,000 people in our community.
That's not hard, shell.
No, yeah.
How much is left?
1,000.
1,000.
So speaking of that, I mean, do you want to look at, scroll up to Meals on Wheels?
Oh, yes, yes. Yes, I'd be willing to
Yeah, let's bump that up.
Go, go to the 2,500. Yeah, I'd be, yeah.
Did you leave off the, the family resource center or the one Good Neighbor Center?
Good Neighbor Center. Yeah.
That's zero?
Yep.
Everybody okay with those numbers?
I have one question. Can we scroll down again? Mine looks different on my page for some reason. Or I'm not reading it right. So the neighbors nourishing, oh, they didn't ask, okay.
Nope.
Thank you. They did a nice presentation.
Everybody okay with these numbers?
Yes.
All right, we'll be back.
All right. Looking for this every year.
People do a really good job of their applications.
All right. So with that, oh, a whole bunch of proclamations, all right. So let's get ready for tonight. Who, let's see, Council Brooks, you're up for pledge of allegiance. All right, and then any questions, concerns with the consent agenda? All right, so then we've got proclamations, but I think we already divvied it out. Council Gonzalez and Reyes will be doing the Hispanic Month proclamation. Council President Pratt will do the preparedness proclamation. Council Brooks will do the Estonia proclamation. And I'll be doing the 9/11 proclamation. Is that everything? Council Brooks. She's good. All right. And then we've got 10 minutes, so let's go ahead and start on the council roundtable, Council Hillier.
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing to report.
Council Reyes.
Nothing to report.
Council Gonzalez.
Nothing to report at this time.
Council Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm gonna start with last Sunday, I made it out to the Family Festival, Stafford Hills and or Stafford Hamlet, I mean. And one thing I would say about that, I had, I picked up a little knapsack that they were giving away and I filled it up with so many different things. And they were all, they were all things that we too as the city are involved with. So it was neat to see some of the print materials from the Water Consortium, some of the materials from their Bee City, the Bee City folks were out from the Lake Us We Go Parks Department. They also said raving things about our Parks Department. And, and there, and there was just so much more. But if people have a chance, it's not like, no offense, like a corny farm fair. It's a really interesting place with a lot of people, with a lot of expertise and talent in growing things. And it's a good place to learn about the environment and the systems. And they were all really happy that we were there. And I also saw a lot of different people like former mayor of Westland, Russ Axelrod. Anyway. The other thing that I wanted to mention is I am getting my updated COVID shot and that shot is out and you can get it at the stores now. So I just encourage people to check that out. And I think most of the other stuff has been a lot of political things. Oh, I went out to the Labor Day picnic in Clackamas County, which was very interesting. I learned a lot there as well. And there were many people out there, including our labor union that represents our city. And then I took a person over to, oh, then we were at the Key Leaders Breakfast and that was really well done. I was really happy that they had our grant information there. And I thought the conversation about tolling and traffic funding was, they're really good questions. It was one of those things where you don't know if you, how interesting it's gonna be, especially because we talk about traffic on this council a lot. And it was really, really interesting to me and it was really nice to see everybody outside of sitting at this little half moon table. And I do also want to mention that for the Water Consortium meeting that's coming up, we're gonna have an esteemed guest, her name is Rachel Sykes, and she's going to be presenting on our new valve that I'm gonna learn the name of one of these days. And, and I also took somebody out today to visit the Steamfitters School, who is an advocate for all training and community colleges. I did not know about this school and in this school is such an impressive place. And I told them about our new valve as well and they didn't know about it and they were pretty impressed by what we could do with that. So that's an amazing place, they show people how to make chips and everything. And so it was quite interesting to see how all of that works. If anybody wants to talk to me about that afterwards, I'm always happy to do that. Thank you so much.
Council President Pratt.
I went to the C4 meeting and I had a conversation kind of on the side with John Sarah from TRIMET. He was presenting. He was implying that line 96 is going to be that 8,000 stop route. But I, I brought up that we have Plantback Gardens and housing going up north and that we have no weekend service. So he did email me back a day later and say that we are going to have that starting fiscal year '26, whatever that means, but we will have it in the future, which I was happy about. They have an honored citizens fair for low income people. And when I asked about that, it's some process where you actually have to go into an office to get it. So they're working on updating that and he's gonna send us information.
Rye Connection, I hope you do it too.
Yeah, so he's gonna send information so we can help get that information out to people. Yeah, the key leaders, Chamber Key Leaders Breakfast on Transportation, that was interesting. I did get to have a conversation afterwards with Chris Strickler from ODOT and mostly tried to explain that we under, I think most people in our position understand the need for more funding, but also that we want it to be, you know, more dollars going to the roads than administration. And that that's very important to us. I went to the Cert Fair and I see Kathy here, but I didn't see her there, but it was really well attended and really fun. And I also went to the Stanford Hamlet with my grandkids and it was great. And they did have a lot of great information, like my husband came home with a book on plants that don't take a lot of water. And it was fun, there were llamas and miniature horses online. And that's it.
All right. Real quick, had a meeting with Martin McGuire at Metro about the ARWAC, the Regional Waste Advisory Committee. They're reviving that due to cities wanting more input about rates at Metro. The Washington County mayors are going to select a representative for Washington County to be on that committee. I'm assuming Clackamas County, Monoma County are gonna do that. And Council President Peterson told me she might expand out the five seats a little bit more so she can get more cities involved, so they can hear from the cities and the haulers at the same time on Metro refuse operations. Also attended the transportation roundtable, was interesting, sitting next to Representative Susan McLean, you know, to have her ear to myself for about two hours and chirping there. Gave her some perspective that she wasn't aware of and talked to her about the the transportation committee that's traveling throughout the state. If you have it marked on your calendar, it's on the 26th and 27th of September. The 26th will be in Happy Valley for Clackamas County. I don't know why they're picking a Friday night, the 27th for Hillsborough for Washington Counties. But how it's laid out is they're gonna do a bus tour of a certain feature of transportation that needs funding. Then there'll be a roundtable for invited guests. And then the last part of it is a public hearing for the public to talk to the legislature, legislators about what they're looking for from the 25th session. As I mentioned before, attended the Aging Task Force meeting this morning, or this afternoon. There's gonna be a big push about mobility, housing, and transportation for the task force to work on. They want to talk to Rye Connection, they want to talk to TRIMET, they want to talk to Washington County. Of course, they want to talk to the city about subjects on folks getting around town safely. With that, that's it. We're done, just in time, so it's about 7 o'clock. I'll go ahead and call this meeting adjourned, give people a five minute bio break, we'll come back at 7:05. See you in a few minutes.